Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Rob Champetti. I'm the chairman of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals, and I want to welcome you to the Newburyport ZBA hearing for the hearing night, of course, of this evening, which is February 5th. Yes, sorry, February 9th. So for those of you that are unfamiliar with Newburyport ZBA, what we'll do in a moment is we'll go through our agenda. We begin, at least using the agenda as a guide to, we start our hearing by simply going over the flow of the meeting. We will then take a roll call, establish a quorum, determine who the voting members are. I'll introduce the members of the ZBA, as well as the staff members who are also on as participants and panelists. And we will then go right into our public hearings this evening. The one change this evening is that unlike the agenda, we only have two matters before before our board this evening, 8 Peters Road and 2224 Oak Street. We're going to take the 2224 Oak Street, which is a continuation from the meeting of 12621 first. I will be unable to vote on that hearing, so the chair of that hearing will be our vice chair, Mr. Mark Moore, who will step up and take the gavel and conduct that hearing. Our voting member will therefore be our alternate, Mr. Walter Bud Chanon. So without further ado, I'll go through the roll call and we'll establish our quorum and get started. We also will, I'll ask the members of the ZBA to just respond in the affirmative, or that you're either here or present, and when I call your name. Starting with the roll call of the Newburyport Zoning Board of Appeals, Mr. Mark Moore.
Here.
Mr. Stephen Delisle.
Here.
Ms. Rachel Webb.
Here.
Mr. Ken Swanton.
Here.
Bud Chanon.
Here.
Gregory Bennett. I don't hear, I don't see Mr. Bennett on just yet. And Rob Champetti, I am also present. So we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6 members in attendance. We have a quorum. And for the first application in my absence, we will have 5. Our voting member will be Bud Chanon. And on the second application this evening, on 8 Peters Road, the voting members will be myself, Mr. Moore, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb, and Mr. Swanton. So without further ado, we've established that we have a quorum. I'll quickly go through and introduce members of our board. Our vice chairman is Mr. Mark Moore, Mr. Stephen Delisle, our secretary, Ms. Rachel Webb, member, Mr. Ken Swanton, member, Walter Bud Chanon, associate member, and Gregory Bennett, associate member. And again, my name is Rob Champetti, chairman. Moving through our agenda this evening, and just bear with me a second, we're going to go into our public hearings. But before we do, I'll just note that the other panelists that you'll see online, for those of you that are logged in here, you'll see Mr. Andy Port, who's our city planner, Caitlin Sullivan, our city, I'm sorry, planning director, Caitlin Sullivan, our city planner, and Ms. Gretchen Joy, who is our keeper of the minutes. When we do the public hearings, as you may be familiar, if you've been here before, we will, I'll start by reading the application by name, the applicant's name and the address, as well as the application being sought this evening by the applicant, whether it's a special permit, special permit for nonconformities or variance, or any other variants, as well as any further description that was published in the public notice. After that, we will, we will turn the floor over to the applicant to present their application. And it's as simple as that. The application's presented by the applicant, the applicant's representatives, attorneys, engineers, architects, or all of the above. At the close of that, we will close that portion of the public hearing, and then we will go to the public comment section. Public comment is simply, we will, Mr. Port will put up a quick outline on the Zoom screen to let you know the format of public comment. We asked that you keep public comments to 2 minutes or under, that you state your name and your address for our keeper of the minutes to record, then just simply feel free to share what's on your mind. You don't have to necessarily be in support or opposition, though you're welcome to indicate that. You can simply share your thoughts for the benefit of the board. We'll then close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. The board will ask questions of the applicant. The board will adopt questions that were posed by members of the public, if any. And once questions are asked and answered, we'll close that portion of the public hearing and go to deliberations. At deliberations, the board will think out loud and address the thinking and any questions or any thoughts and discussion around and tailored around the legal criteria that the applicant needed to meet or needs to meet under their request. And that means they'll deliberate the legal elements or the findings that we need to find in terms of special permits, special permit for nonconformities and legal variants, dimensional variants and other variances. Once we conclude the deliberation, we'll close that portion of the public hearing, at which point we'll listen to a motion to approve from any member of the ZBA, which must be seconded. Motion to approve doesn't mean it's going to be approved. It's just as simply the Roberts Rules format. A motion to approve is made and seconded by another member. Once it's made and seconded, I'll take the roll call, and 4 in the affirmative are needed in order for the motion to pass and the application to be approved. That's essentially the flow. And so we will start now with the first public hearing, which is a continuation. And I will, I'll just read the notice and then turn things over to our vice chair, Mr. Moore. This is the continuation of the application of Richard Morrell care of Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Acosta LLC for the property address of 22-24 Oak Street. Two matters before ZBA this evening, the dimensional variants 2020-089 to lot, to split the lot, creating a separate lot for a new single-family home. And 2020-090, dimensional variants, also a lot split, creating a separate lot for an existing home. With that, I will turn things over to Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the lovely introduction. I would only add that since the continuation, that the applicant has redesigned the new home proposed for Lot 2. And as a result of reducing the size of the new home, the applicant no longer needs relief in front and rear setbacks. With that said, might we hear from the applicant?
Thank you, Mr. Chair and members of the board, Lisa Mead, Mead Tellman Acosta, on behalf of Richard Morrell, and with him also his daughter, Deborah Nelson, and son-in-law, Jim Nelson. As Mr. Moore suggested in the beginning, and you can go to the second slide, thank you. After the last meeting, there are a number of questions or further information, I should say, that the board requested. One was, the applicants took very much to heart, and that was to take a look at the design of the house and the need to actually have the front and rear setback relief. And to that end, the house actually was redesigned to a colonial style, and actually smaller in footprint, more traditional looking along Oak Street, and certainly more complementary to the existing house of Mr. Morrell's. And it reduced the need to have a variance for front and rear setback. And so the only variance on that lot, which would be considered Lot 2, is for Lot Area. Lot 1 continues to need the front setback variance and the lot area variance, just because of the non-conforming front yard setback. So if you could go to the next slide, please. One of the other questions that happened, that came up, was a comparison of lot area along Oak Street. So we had provided a comparison of lots along Beacon, and I believe it was Ms. Webb that requested whether or not we had looked at the lot sizes along Locs Oak Street. And we had not at the time, because we felt that the corner lot there, Mr. Morrell's house, was more of the neighborhood, if you will, of Beacon. But we did look at the lot sizes on Oak Street, and I provided those to the board. And again, the proposed Lot 1, Mr. Morrell's house, would not be either the largest or the smallest on Oak Street. Certainly one of the smaller lots, but certainly not the smallest on Oak Street. So the next thing that we looked at, and if you could go to the next slide, is the board asked really, how was this lot created? And, you know, at the time, you know, given our current situation, and I think I said this in my cover memo to the board, with your clients not sitting beside you, it's hard to make sure that you get all of the facts correct and available immediately to the board. So you might note that I indicated our last meeting that it was due to the layout of Beacon Avenue. And in fact, that's correct. But Jim and Jim Nelson and Mr. Morrell, Deborah Nelson, did a lot more research. And I'm going to go through that research with you, because it's certainly evident that Mr. Morrell didn't create the shape of this lot, that it was by operation of a road layout. But on this plan, I do want to show you that you can see that the house is all fully within the setbacks and is smaller in footprint than the original structure that we proposed. But you see the odd shape of this lot. And then, what, if you blew this up a little bit, Andy or Caitlin, I'm not sure who's operating the screen here, but you can see the light line in the middle of it that makes it kind of a pie-shaped lot with the larger end over on Oak Street. So if you could go to the next slide, please. What we found was that the, oh, let me go through the, kind of out of order here, but let me just tell you that one of the other questions that happened, that was asked by the board, is whether or not this was downzoned by the city when the city did the downzoning in 2017. I'd indicated, of course, there was a downzoning, wasn't sure how far over it went. But to confirm that, we went back and looked, and this area was not downzoned. It was R2 and remains R2 prior to the downzoning. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So what we have here is a photo of Debbie and her mom. And in the background, you might recall that we had said there was a greenhouse at one time on this little lot, the sliver that the Nelsons eventually bought, excuse me, the Morrells eventually bought. So over the shoulder, the left-hand shoulder of the snowman, you will see the top of the greenhouse in the background. Later, this, so this would have been in the late 50s, early 60s. And currently, you can see Mr. Morrell's house, which is now yellow, and there's nothing on that side of the street. And if you could go to the next slide, please. So this is the Sanborn map from 1902. And if you could blow it up, Andy, and see that at the bottom of it, you'll see that yellow dot. So you can see that Beacon Street ends just after Oak Street, and that the lot actually is part of the larger lot on the opposite side of what is now Beacon Street, which is 26 Oak Street. So you can see in this 1902 Sanborn map that Beacon Street didn't go all the way through. And if you could go to the next slide, please. So these 2 maps are USGS maps. And right in the center of the one from 1952, you see a blue dot. And that is, that is the house, that's Mr. Morrell's house. And you see that Beacon Street stops. And that whole area does not include Riley that runs into Marlboro or South Pond. Well, then you can see South Pond that runs in, but Riley's not there yet. And Beacon doesn't extend up to Riley and South Pond. But if you go over to 1966, you can see the house and then the thereafter extension of Beacon Street. So this sliver of land was created by the extension of Beacon Street and taken off of what is now 26 Oak Street. And so the current shape of the land was not caused by Mr. Morrell or his predecessor, rather by a layout of the road, which he had no control over. And then, once he purchased that remaining pie-shaped lot to have his, as his own ownership with his then-wife, it merged by operation of law, obviously not his doing either. So if you could go to the next slide, please. So the Nelsons, here's the front elevation of the house that we have, the more traditional colonial style. You can see there are some really nice details that have been added to this. We've got the bay windows and the side lights on the doors. If you go to the next slide, please. And then here's your rear elevation that runs out the back. And the next slide, please. And you can see there's some nice corbels and details that are added to the design of the overhangs, which are very typical of this style of colonial. And the next slide, please. And then we have the right elevation that would face Mr. Morrell's house or up Beacon and Oak Street. And then the next slide, please. And as you can see, there's the setting of the rendering of the proposed structure and Mr. Morrell's house to the right. So we believe, based upon the information we've now provided, the additional information, which I think is informative to everybody, the board can grant a variance for Lot 1 as to area and front yard setback, and for Lot 2 for area, due to the hardship related to the shape of the lot, both lots. And further, that the shape is not the making of the applicant and will not be a special privilege to the neighborhood as the resulting lots do not, are not the largest nor the smallest and are consistent in use. And there are no derogation from the purpose and intent of the ordinance, as they will all generally be in line with the remainder of the neighborhood, and the use for a single-family home will be continued. I finally remind the board that the applicant has presented at the last meeting that five of Butters supplied letters of support regarding this application. And that's all I have, and I'll take questions from the board, Mr. Chair. I'm not hearing anything.
It's also helpful if one unmutes their mic before they speak. Just a hint. It was a, it was a really. No, no, it was me. Really great explanation of how we're going to use raised hands and all that, but everyone missed it. So we're going to make public comments at this time before questions from the board. So we'll try this again. If anyone, if anyone has a comment on this application in the public and would like to make a comment at this time, please electronically raise your hand. And unlike me, before you start speaking, please give your name, address, and make sure to unmute your mic. Do we see any raised hands, I guess is the question.
Chair, this is Andy. I'm not seeing any raised hands at this point.
Okay. Going once, going twice. Okay, seeing no questions, I mean, no comments from the public. We'll close that. And we will go to questions from the board. And I'll start with Mr. Delisle.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. I don't have any questions. I would, I guess I would like to thank the applicant for going back and giving this application another run. You know, the new design of the house, and it looks really nice. But I don't have any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on now to Ms. Webb.
I have a question for the applicant. I'm wondering if there was ever any consideration given to doing an attached in-law to the existing home and not building a separate detached home, and therefore not needing the lot split.
I don't, I don't believe that there was, Ms. Webb, that both families would like to live separately and have, and retain their separate homes and households. The Nelsons have a daughter as well. And so I think that they would, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Morrell would like to continue to live alone, but have his daughter close. And then the Nelsons would like to have their own home with their daughter themselves.
Any further questions, Ms. Webb?
No, I do not have any other further questions. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Swan.
Yes, thank you. I kind of like to get back for the, to the reason that we're here and looking at, I haven't seen the numbers. It'd be useful to see them again, as far as we're splitting a lot into 2 smaller lots, and I believe the minimum is 10,000 square feet. And how big are these 2 lots? Could we go back over that information, please?
Sure, no problem. Lot 1, which is the existing house lot, is 6,889 square feet. And Lot 2 is, hang on one minute, 7,898 square feet. I just want to confirm, yes, 7,898 square feet.
Okay, now, you provided some comparison information to the neighborhood, and you sent that to us since the last meeting.
Yeah.
Could you put that up or talk to that? I don't know if Andy has that, but the letter that came in as part of this material?
Yeah.
So we.
Hold it up.
So we have done, while Andy's pulling that up, we gave you 2 comparisons. The first meeting, we compared it to Oak Street, excuse me, Beacon Ave. We compare both lots to Beacon Ave. And in the most recent proposal, we compare the remaining lot, or the original lot, Lot 1 on Oak Street, to the other homes on Oak Street. So if I, while he's pulling that up, so the proposed lot that faces Oak Street is 6,889 square feet. The smallest lot on Oak Street is 2,910 square feet. And then the next lot up from that is 6,070 square feet. And then they range 7,050 square feet, which is just a little bit bigger, up to 16,359 square feet, but that has a 2 family on it. So Andy, it's on the second or third page of my submission. It's a table I had in my letter to the board. That's the second letter, Andy. That followed the first, that's not the right letter. There you go.
That looks like it. So if you can zoom in on that. Yeah. So looking at, looking at this table, it looks like, if I look at the bottom of the table, the average single-family house on Oak Street is 9,121. Is that correct? Am I reading this correctly?
That's correct. That's the math I did. That's correct.
So you're proposing to, to reduce this house lot size from a conforming lot down to 6,889, which is a lot below, it's not just below the 10,000, obviously, which is why you're here, but it's considerably below the average house on the street at 9,121. I just want to make sure I understand that.
Yeah, that's correct, on Oak Street. But there, there's, you know, I think it's important, right? There are a whole host of different sized lots on Oak Street, right? There's a house that is 2,910 square feet, excuse me, a lot that's 2,910 square feet. There's a lot that's 7,050 square feet. There's a lot that's 9,140 square feet. It goes all the way up to a 2 family that has 16,359 square feet. So there are a number of houses of different, lots of different size on Oak Street, and similarly on Beacon. So on Beacon Street, which I really believe that this is more appropriate to compare it to, which is why I put it in the first application, our first cover memo. Beacon on 17 Oak Street, which is directly across the street, is 6,098 square feet. And then on Beacon Street, you have 20 Pine Street, which is up on the corner also, is 6,882 square feet. So the average on the northerly side of Beacon Street is 8,810, the smallest being 6,098.
Right, which the average at 8,810 is still a lot bigger than either of these 2 small lots that you're proposing to create. I guess my next question, if you could put up Slide 3 in tonight's presentation, I have a follow-up question related to this. Sorry, Andy, to be jumping around here.
That's quite right. Just tell me what you need anytime.
So Slide 3, the last line there says, neither will be the largest nor the smallest in the neighborhood. And those words, nor the smallest, are you proposing that the criteria we should be using to decide whether, when you chop a lot in half, that the 2 pieces are not the smallest in the neighborhood? I mean, that's a pretty low bar.
No, I'm not suggesting that at all. What I'm suggesting is that it doesn't take away from the neighborhood and that it's in the same context as the neighborhood. So I was trying to give you an example. It's not the average. I gave you the averages, right? But it's not the largest and it's not the smallest. There are different size homes, I mean, excuse me, different sized lots within the Beacon Street and Oak Street neighborhood. And what I'm trying to tell you is that it fits in, because there are other lots that are both larger and smaller than the neighborhood. And, and so that's what I was trying to express.
Right. Now, I understand that it's somewhere between the largest and the smallest. I just was surprised to see that, those words on the page. And I'm discouraged that it's, it's not like it's a little bit under 10,000. It's below the average that had been built over the years in the neighborhood. And in many of those years, the zoning was a lot less. And I guess my next question is more directed at the planning department. As you probably realize, the planning department has recommended that we do not approve this. And I would like to ask them to chime in for a moment as to why.
Hi, this is Andy Port.
Go ahead. Yep.
Just to clarify, you know, the board has the authority, if it makes a finding that there is a hardship involved here, and that it's not detrimental to grant the variance. The concern that our office raises, and this is not unique to Newburyport, this is, this happens in communities across the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, is when a variance is granted, a substantial variance is granted in terms of the proportion of that variance, from, in this case, the total lot size expected by the city council and its adoption of the zoning code in that particular district. When this board here is being asked to adopt a substantial reduction in that to create, as one member had just pointed out, substantially smaller lots, even then say maybe the average in the neighborhood. And there is quite a variation, I would say, in that neighborhood of different lot sizes. You know, there's a reason why merger happens in Massachusetts to make non-conforming lots conform, better conform. And, you know, the board has to decide whether or not a new home, you know, maybe makes sense in this location. But the board should also be prepared, if approving this project, that other applicants, other attorneys in the future will be inclined to cite this application or similar, as similar circumstances, even though every application is, you know, supposedly unique and has to be reviewed on its own criteria, that there's a precedent being set here by how low can, how low of a proportion of variance can someone get? Is it, is it below 7,000 square feet in a 10,000 square foot district? You know, and is, in this case, is it, is it needed to create a viable use of the lot in question? Well, if lots have merged together, you know, and they, they currently comply with zoning, and there's a current, currently a viable use on the lot, which is, was a home. I'm not sure that one can say that there's a, you know, a financial hardship there, per se. But there is, there's a reason why the city council sets thresholds in terms of lot size. And if this much of a variance is going to be granted, then the board may be criticized, as I've seen in occasion on the past, for being too, what might, one might argue is too lenient in terms of the relief being granted. Ultimately, this board has to decide what to do here, and this office will pursue, you know, follow through with, you know, filing whatever decision the board renders in this instance. But we just think that the board needs to be prepared for when an action is taken to substantially reduce lot size, you know, and just be prepared that other people may ask for similar circumstances in the future.
If I could, Mr. Chair.
I'll go ahead. Turn to me.
So I think we had this conversation a little bit last time, too. But, you know, the, the board, every application is its own application. And there may be unique circumstances, as I believe there are here, that justifies this variance over someplace else. And so it may be, I mean, I could, I could point to other variances and lot splits that the board has granted. But the reality is, is that this board grants everything on its own merits. And you would say to me, well, Lisa, Attorney Mead, we need to decide your application based upon what's in front of you. And that, and so there's no legal basis for a precedent, if you will. And so while people may argue it, as you know, this board knows, that there is no basis upon which to argue precedent by other cases, because they are all unique in and of itself. And that's the exact reason why there are, there's the ability to vary from the zoning ordinance. And so you have to decide whether or not, in this particular instance, because of the shape of the lot and even the shape before and after the merger, whether a variance is justified. And in this instance, I agree that this is not the largest lot in the neighborhood, and it certainly doesn't meet the 10,000 square foot requirement. However, it is not also, it's not an exceedingly small lot in the neighborhood either. There are smaller lots. However, it is not also, it's not an exceedingly small lot in the neighborhood either. There are smaller lots. And so the, the question becomes whether or not the board believes that we have met the, the very, the requirements for a variance. And we, I believe we've shown that it is, um, does not derogate from the purpose and intent of the ordinance. It continues to be a single-family home. It continues to be consistent with the variant-sized lots within Beacon Street and Oak Street. Um, and that's why we're here. And if we didn't have the ability to file for a variance, we wouldn't be here.
I, i- if I might ask another question?
Go right ahead.
Um, a variance has to have, um, in general, a problem with the lot as far as its topology, its shape. I noticed if, when I looked at your other map from the other presentation of the neighborhood, most, very few of the lots in the neighborhood are really what I would say, you know, square with right angles. I mean, are you, is this lot that unusual?
I, I believe that it is. Um, I, I don't believe that there's another lot that has this odd-shaped bubble on the end that is like a pie shape. Um, and you can see they, some of them have a little, they're not exactly square, but they don't have this kind of diagonal thing going at it where the front lot line on Oak Street is much longer than the rear lot line that backs up against that house on Riley Avenue. Um, so my, my contention is that, in fact, it is unique compared to the rest of the lots in the neighborhood. Um, and it's an odd shape.
Well, this chart, obviously, that little pie on the corner is unique, but as I understand it, that's merged together.
That's correct.
W- with the other lots. So essentially, it's a big rectangle with a rounded edge. I know the two sides aren't parallel. But as I look around the neighborhood, you know, I see an awful lot of lots that don't have right angles or don't, or have jogs in them or, or, I don't know. I mean, it's, I, I just want to make sure I understand what you're saying. So the saying, a lot is so unusual that you need a variance here to chop it into two smaller lots that are smaller than the average lots in the neighborhood.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. That's my last question.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Swanton. Uh, Mr. Chagman?
I, I just had one question for the applicant. Was, was any consideration given to, um, splitting the lots where one of them became conforming? I know it creates a, a very, very undersized lot, but as an example, if, um, if Lot Two grew to ten thousand square feet, you wouldn't need a variance for anything. Um, Lot One, Lot One would be extremely undersized. I was just wondering if any consideration was, was given to that approach.
Well, we were attempting to have both lots be as close as possible to the lot area requirements. If you're suggesting, Mr. Chagman, that that would, uh, encourage you to approve this, um, application, I'm sure I would be happy to go back and talk to my applicants about it. But just getting my conversation, uh, with Mr. Swanton here, I don't know that he would be on the same page.
Agreed, agreed. A- and, and I, and I guess, uh, kudos to, uh, the change, uh, where the, um, the Lot Two house has shrunk to remove the setback issues. And, and I think, um, your application has done a, an admirable job at trying to get the two lots to be as, as close to, uh, the ten thousand as possible. I mean, if it was right down the middle, each lot would be seventy-four hundred square feet and one of them seventy-eight, so, uh, all right, thank you. I have no other questions, Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. And I don't have any, uh, further questions. I think there's been some good discussion already. So, um, with that, I will close questions from the board and move to deliberations. And again, we'll start with, uh, go back around the horn and start with Mr. Delisle.
Thanks, Mr. Moore. Um, so I think here we are, and it's sort of the same, the same issue as it was at the last meeting where we addressed this application that we have the proposal for two undersized lots. Uh, one, the lot number one being approximately sixty-nine percent of what is required by the ordinance and lot number two being about seventy-nine percent of what is required by the ordinance. And it appears that we have a lot that, uh, the, 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 the current lot, as it currently is configured, it's, i- in my opinion, it's really not that unique of a shape to, uh, to constitute a hardship as our ordinance, uh, would define it. So I'm having still, uh, some trouble with this. Um, I'm glad that we were able to put the downzoning issue to bed, uh, but I think that that cuts kind of both ways. We don't have to talk about the downzoning, but in fact, it's the requirements for R2 have been in place over this lot for a longer period of time. So, um, that being said, I'm, I'm, I'm still struggling with this one. And I, I, a difficult time with the four, uh, criteria for the variance.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Delisle. And that's good reference there to the four criteria that, um, we should all be shaping our deliberations around, which is conditions and circumstances unique to the applicant's lot, structure of building, do not apply to the neighboring land, structures and buildings and, or in the buildings in the same district. Strict application of the provisions of this chapter would deprive the applicant of reasonable use of the lot, structure or building in a manner equivalent to the use permitted to be made by other owners in neighboring lands, structures or buildings in the same district. Unique conditions and circumstances are not the result of actions of the applicant taken subsequent to the adoption of the chapter and relief will not constitute a grant of special privilege. Um, that being said, we will move on, uh, in the deliberations, um, to Ms. Webb.
Um, thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. Um, I am having a hard time getting behind, um, this application. Um, I thank the applicant for doing the additional research around the lot sizes on Oak Street. I think it's, um, it's, uh, convinced me even more so that, um, you know, this is just, um, a proposal that is below, you know, it just is too far below the, the minimum requirements for the lot size. You know, as Mr. Delisle pointed out, I mean, Lot One would be, what, only sixty-nine percent of what's required and Lot Two would be seventy-nine percent of what's required. And I just think it's a, um, you know, it's a slippery slope to think about approving that in terms of, um, future applications, um. Even, you know, given what, uh, Attorney Mead said about how you really can't compare applications, um, people do. And, um, I think that, um, yeah, I think, just think that this is, uh, too much of a significant deviation from the zoning requirements.
Uh, Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, Attorney Mead.
Um, I'd like to see if we can continue this matter at this moment to the next meeting, please.
Okay, no. Um, so the applicant is asked to continue this to the next meeting and I, I don't have the, uh, the schedule in front of me for the next meeting.
Um, it would be February twenty-third, sir.
Is it twenty-third?
Yeah.
Okay. Maybe I, I didn't have it open here to see, uh, if the schedule is favorable for this on the twenty-third.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, so, um, the applicant has requested a continuance of this to our next meeting, which is the twenty-third of, uh, February. Does anyone, would anyone like to make a motion? Or to have any further comment before we make a motion? Here we know further comments. Is there a motion for continuance?
I so moved, Rachel Webb.
My second, Bud Chagman.
Okay, we have a motion, uh, to continue this application to two twenty-three, twenty-one, uh, made by Ms. Webb, seconded by Mr. Chagman. We now go with the vote. Um, Mr. Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Mr. Moore, yes, with the, the chair recue from this one. Uh, that's all in the affirmative, so the application will be continued to the meeting of, uh, two twenty-three, twenty-one.
Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Um, with that application completed, I know we'll be handing the virtual gavel back to the chairman, uh, Mr. Rob Champetti.
Okay, thank you, uh, Mr. Moore. And, um, just continuing on our, uh, agenda this evening, we will jump right into the second and final application, which is the application of Jane B. Holiday, the property address of Eight Peters Road, uh, twenty, twenty dash, uh, sorry, twenty twenty-one dash zero one. Special permit for nonconformities to add an additional garage bay of twenty feet, ten inches by twenty-four foot, ten inches on a pre-existing, uh, non-conforming lot. Uh, with that, uh, may we hear from the applicant. Um, Ms. Holiday, you have the floor.
Good evening. Thank, thank you. Um, I can hear the feedbacks. I don't know, disturbing. As, I have lived here in this home since two thousand and five. And I have, have asked my partner, Stephen Clark, to present.
Um, Jane, this is Andy Port. I apologize for interrupting. Uh, if I could make a suggestion, um, you, it sounds like you might have two speakers on in the room that you're in. Um, if you could turn one of those off, uh, it would prevent the echo. I just want to make sure that our board members and the public can hear you properly.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
That's great. Thank you.
That is much better. Um, so what I was saying was that I have asked my partner, Stephen Clark, to present on our behalf, in terms of this application for the special permit. And you may, you may begin.
Yes, hello, this is, this is.
Yes, I did.
This is Stephen Clark. And I have the, uh, this PowerPoint up and, um, al- also we have.
Uh, Stephen, this is Andy again. I apologize for interrupting. If, if you have, uh, two devices on the same room, it creates an echo. So if you could shut off one of the, uh, microphone or the, one of the speakers, that would prevent the echo.
Is that better?
That's perfect. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Um, yes, this is, this is Stephen Clark and I have a, a PowerPoint up here to, to, uh, present our application. Um, and also, um, Matt Jesse, who is the architect, um, I believe is on the call. I can't see the participants. So if there are any questions for him, um, you can address him also.
Okay, Ms. Clark, was that, I apologize, you, you cut off just at the very end. Was that the, uh, was that the, the extent of your application or your proposed, your, your, your presentation?
Uh, this is Andy. I was just, uh, trying to connect Steve so he could pull up a visual on the screen if he'd like.
I, you know, I missed that, that second part of it, so forgive me. My, my apologies. Go ahead.
That's okay. I'm, I'm not sure. Steve, is that correct? Do you have on your end the visual to, uh?
Hi, Andy. It's Caitlin. There should be a PowerPoint posted on our website for tonight.
Ah, okay, hang on one moment. Did that come in, uh, when did that come in?
Um, this afternoon.
Ah, okay. My apologies. I had grabbed things earlier today, so that's the only reason why. Hang on just one second. Just as a reminder to the applicants, we typically ask for these things in advance of, of the day of the meeting, just so that, um, Hello?
Hello, uh, Mr. Clark. This is, this is Chairman Champetti. I, I can see you. Uh, we, it looks like we're, um, are we, we're just going based on your, um, PowerPoint presentation that you submitted. And, uh, it looks like it's queued up. So if you can see it, uh, on your screen, if you could go ahead and just direct, um, uh, Caitlin Sullivan to click on through, uh, as you'd like with each slide, she can go ahead and do that for you.
Okay, good. I, I see the, the title slide, so we can go to the next slide. So the, the project is to add an additional garage bay of dimensions twenty foot, ten inches by twenty-four foot, ten inches on a pre-existing non-conforming lot. The nonconformity is, uh, first, the front setback requirement for zone R1 is thirty feet. The existing structure has a setback of eighteen point nine feet. The proposed structure does not disappeared. It does not impact the front setback. It reminds, remains at eighteen point nine feet. Uh, the next slide. Peters Road is located between Turkey Hill Road and the Artichoke Reservoir. It's in Zone R2. It's also in the Water Resource Protection District Zones B and C. Now the next slide.
It's not clear to me why these images aren't, uh, appearing or displaying. Were there, I, I assume you had images in, in this PowerPoint presentation?
Yes, yes, I've run this through, uh, multiple times and it ran fine for me.
Hey, Andy, this is Ken. I downloaded it. I can see the images.
All right, let's try this. Uh, my, my, uh, program is telling me that there's something, there's a corruption or, or something.
We have them now.
Yeah.
Andy, it looks like we have them now. Um, so we can continue, uh, Mr. Clark, uh, if you want to just continue to move through your, um, it looks like we're on slide two. And then slide three was the one that, uh, appears to have the, um, the R2, uh, map.
Right, right. So, so this is just, this is just showing the location of a, of a property on the map. The red circle shows where the house is and, and what zone it's in. Um, it, it's in, uh, the next slide is an aerial, um, photograph, just showing the, the property. It's a corner property. Um, it also shows a relationship of, of this structure to the butter at Six Peters. Next slide. We have spoken to Joanne Doan at Six Peters Road and she supports our desire to expand a garage. She is the only a butter as Eight Peters Road is a corner lot. Uh, next. Uh, this is an aerial view with the, uh, approximate lot lines, uh, in it. Next slide. And we have superimposed on this, um, where the garage addition would be and also showing the widening of the driveway. Next slide. Uh, this is just a little bit closer to see the, uh, see that a little bit better. Um, okay, then the next, the next slide is, um, the same, the same thing shown from, um, we started with the, uh, the little sketch that's on the assessors card for the property, which is the, the blue and pink. And then I added in gray the proposed, um, addition and driveway. Next slide. Um, okay, so this is the, uh, architect's plan. Um, this is the, the first page is the, the plan view. And the, um, the second page is the elevation. And if we go, it's hard to see at that scale, but one more right here shows it blown up a little bit. And this is the elevation view, uh, with the rendering of the structure. Uh, and it also shows the building height. And, um, the height of the proposed addition is one foot shorter than the existing property. Uh, next slide. And this is just a, a, a current photograph of the front of the property. The next, next slide. And this is the east side of the property. Uh, this is where the addition would go up against, uh, up against this wall. And the final slide. So we are requesting a special permit for nonconformities to build in addition to a pre-existing non-conforming structure. A special permit for nonconformities is required due to non-conforming lot size and front and side setbacks. There will be no increase or extension of any nonconformities. The addition consists of a five hundred and seventeen square foot of garage space. And this design allows us to have enclosed winter parking for two cars. The existing and proposed use is single-family. The lot is non-conforming. The lot is non-conforming for lot area, has 12,330 feet where 20,000 is required. Front yard setback 18.9 feet where 30 feet is required. And side yard setback on the west side of the property is 16.4 feet where 20 feet is required. The proposed addition will not result in any new non-conformities or result in any additional ones. The addition of a second garage bay is not more detrimental than the existing. The addition is on the east side of the building, but the existing and proposed side setbacks are within the required dimensional controls. The front setback of the proposed addition is greater than that of the existing structure and therefore not more detrimental than existing. So thank, thank you for, uh, allowing us, uh, to present, and, um, we'd like to hear your questions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Clark. Um, and, um, thank you as well, Ms. Holiday. Um, so, uh, closing that portion of the public hearing, we'll now go to, um, comments, uh, the public comment section. Anyone who wishes to, uh, to speak in support or opposition or simply speak, just simply raise your hand. Uh, and we will unmute your mic and let's see three attendees, uh, and, uh, I don't expect that we'll see any comments, but going once, going twice. Seeing no hands, I'm going to close that portion of the public hearing and go to questions from the board. Um, okay, uh, starting with, uh, Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Champetti. And I just had one questions on some of the materials. I, I assume that it's just any exterior is going to match what the existing structure is. Just wondered if you could comment on that briefly?
Uh, yes, the exterior, um, is, uh, shingles, and we will use cedar shingles, um, of the same type. Of course, when they're new, they'll be a different color, but after a few seasons, they'll, they'll, you know, weather to a typical New England weather look.
Understood.
Understood.
Uh, thank you. I have no further questions.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Uh, Mr. Delisle?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I have no questions, uh, for the applicant. It was a thorough presentation. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb.
Um, I just have one out of curiosity. This, um, space to the right of the proposed garage door, no, just go back to the one that was there, the elevation drawing. Is that, um, I mean, it looks like it's almost enough width for another two, for a two-car garage. Is there a workshop space or something on the interior?
Um, yeah, we wanted to have extra storage, uh, um, in a, in a place for a workbench. Um, we didn't go to adding two more spaces because we thought it was too big. It would look too big on, for the property, and we, we didn't need that much space. But there is enough room there to have a, like I said, storage shelves and a workbench along that wall.
Good, thanks.
All right, thank you, Ms. Webb. Uh, Mr. Swanton?
Uh, I thought it was a very good presentation, very thorough, uh, and I have no questions.
Very good. Uh, and I have, uh, well, you know what? Let's, we'll, we'll run through the rest of our, our alter, our associate members. Uh, Mr. Chagman?
Uh, no, no additional questions, Chair. Very good presentation. Thank you.
Very good. And, uh, is Mr. Bennet online with us? I do not see him. Um, so I, I too have no further questions that haven't already been addressed. So, uh, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Uh, Mr. Clark and Ms. Holiday for addressing, uh, that in the presentation. So with that, we'll close the, uh, the board questions segment of the public hearing and go to deliberations. Uh, and again, in deliberation, since this is a special permit for non-conformities, uh, the board, um, the applicant is required to, uh, to present an application where the board can make findings. Those findings from the board, um, uh, must be, must be that the, uh, that the board finds that there's no new addition of a new non-conformity, and that there'll be no new non-conformity. The project addition, um, that's being proposed, uh, isn't creating any, any new non-conformity under zoning. The board must also find that the application will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the pre-existing non-conforming user structure. And of course, when we make that determination, the board must find, uh, must gauge its finding based on, uh, factors such as size, scale, massing, volume, location, uh, of the proposed structure, uh, extension or alteration as it's compared to the existing structure, uh, and the lot, as well as other structures and lots in the neighborhood. Uh, this is all under 9B2. Also, I'll note that the project doesn't appear to trigger the tree and sidewalk ordinance, uh, so we have no, uh, further board proposals as it relates to that. With that, I will move right into deliberations and start with Mr. Moore.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Chairman. I thought the presentation, as, as several of my colleagues said, was very thorough, uh, straightforward, um, reasonable addition, fits the existing structure very well. Um, doesn't create a new, a no, uh, new non-conformity. Um, setback actually is a little better from front. And, um, given that it's a, a single one-car garage, um, I do not see this being anywhere near being more substantially detrimental for the neighborhood. So, um, I can certainly support this.
All right, thank you, Mr. Moore. Mr. Delisle?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Moore said it very well, and I would concur with his conclusion, and I, I too can support this project.
All right, thank you, Mr. Delisle, Ms. Webb.
Um, I as well can support this project. I took a drive out there this afternoon, and, um, the neighborhood clearly has many homes that have attached garages and homes that don't. But, um, they have plenty of space to add this, and the abutting neighbor, um, is in support of it, and it's not creating any new non-conformity. So like I said at the beginning, I can support this.
All right, thank you, Ms. Webb. Mr. Swanton?
Uh, my colleagues have pretty well said everything, and I too can support this.
Uh, okay, and, uh, I, I as the fifth voting member on this application, I shared the, the sentiment of the rest of the board and, and, um, feel it was a nice application, well presented. I too can support it. Uh, so we can go ahead and close that portion of the public hearing. Um, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion, Mr. Moore, I'll make a motion, um, to approve Eight Peters Road special permit for non-conformities, uh, application 2021-01.
Mr. Delisle, I'll second that.
Okay, thank you, uh, motions made by Mr. Moore and seconded by Mr. Delisle calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Delisle?
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's five in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and the application is approved. Congratulations and, uh, thank you both, um, Mr. Clark and, uh, Ms. Holiday, and have a good evening.
Thank you so much.
All right, uh, moving now to the, uh, end of our, that's the, that concludes our, the public hearings on our agenda. We can now move to our business meeting. And the only matter on our business meeting is the approval of the minutes of the meeting of January 26th, 2021. Do we have any comments from members of the board, additions, revisions, or changes? Um, Mr. Moore?
I have no changes.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle?
I have no changes either.
Ms. Webb?
I have no changes.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Swanton?
I'm good as well.
And Mr. Chagman?
Uh, I think I have one. Uh, page one, third paragraph, sixth sentence. It, uh, refers to 27.34 square feet to 30.27 square feet for lot area. And I believe those should be percentages, 27% to 30, 30% on square feet. That's it.
Very good. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chagman. And I, I too, I have no further comments, uh, or revisions. So with the comment of Mr. Chagman, um, having been made, uh, do we have a motion to approve the minutes?
That's right, I'll, I'll make the motion to approve the minutes, um, as amended.
Seconded, Mr. Moore.
All right, thank you. Motion's made by Ms. Webb and seconded by Mr. Moore, um, calling the roll. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Delisle.
Yes.
Ms. Webb?
Yes.
Mr. Swanton?
Yes.
Mr. Chagman?
Yes.
Rob Champetti, I vote yes. That's six in the affirmative. The ayes have it, the motion carries, and with the amendment, uh, the minutes are approved. That concludes our business of the Newbury Board, Zoning Board of Appeals for, uh, February 9th. Thank you guys very much and have a, uh, have a great evening. Thanks, everyone.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, yeah, let's do that first.
I'll second that.
Excellent.
All those, uh, let's see, uh, motion to adjourn. All those in favor, you can just respond in, with I or N. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Guys have it. Motion carries. Meeting's adjourned. Thanks, guys.
You bet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone. Take care.